Welcome to the Tupelo City Council Meeting of June 20, 2017. At this time, we have an invocation by Councilman Markel Whittington and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Travis Beard. Would you please rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Richard Price. He is a senior pastor of the North Green Church of Christ and a very dear friend of mine, and he's also one of my favorite Yankees.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, our Lord, how excellent is your name in all the earth! Lord, we thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've blessed us with. Lord, for our reason for being here, we simply ask that you would bless our community, bless this wonderful city. Lord, I ask that you would bless every councilman and every councilwoman and those who work so diligently with them to ensure the safety, those who have been vested with the vision for this city. Lord, at times when things get busy and the winds of life change, we forget sometimes how dedicated they are, how much they sacrifice their time, how many occasions they're away from their family. And, Lord, we just say thank you for them. We thank you for their willingness to serve. We thank you for their willingness to go the extra mile, to stay up those long hours when no one else is looking, Lord, while others are enjoying the small pleasantries of life. We just say thank you. Lord, we ask that everything that be done during this meeting would be done in a way that we could all be happy with, that we can all smile about, Lord, but most importantly, that you would be honored with the things that you have tasked to our hands. Lord, I ask a special prayer tonight for our mayor. We ask that you would continue to bless his vision as he leads this city. And, Lord, we ask that you would continue to strengthen him wherever he needs strengthening. We ask these prayers in Jesus' name. Amen.
Vice flag. Attention, salute, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the meeting to order and ask Vice President Markel Whittington to confirm or amend the agenda and set the agenda order.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we confirm the agenda and the agenda order.
Second.
I got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. All in favor? Motion carries. Item four, proclamation, recognition, and reports agenda. There are no boy or girl scouts. 4.2, recognition of city employees. Mayor?
Thank you, President Bryan. At this time, it's my honor and privilege to recognize two of our team members here in the city of Tupelo. I could ask firefighter Christopher Clay Curtis, please come forward at this time. Those that, of course, the council's aware and those, the department heads that are always here are aware, but I'd like to remind the folks watching at home and people that don't come as often when I do these recognitions that this is something that the city of Tupelo takes great pride in. While you often see a council member, a department head, or the mayor on TV or in the newspaper, we have no misconception that it's the over 400 men and women that work for the city of Tupelo every day that make the city of Tupelo operate so smoothly and provide such great city services every single day. At the top of the list of city services, of course, the Tupelo Fire Department that we're so very proud of. So, at this time, on behalf of the council, the administration, and the city of Tupelo, it's with sincere thanks and appreciation that I recognize firefighter Christopher Clay Curtis of the Tupelo Fire Department for 15 years of dedicated employment with the city of Tupelo. Thank you, firefighter Curtis. Mr. Donald Bennett. At this time, on behalf of the council, the administration, and the city of Tupelo, with sincere appreciation and thanks, would like to recognize Sergeant Donald Bennett for 25 years of dedicated employment with the Tupelo Police Department. Thank you, Sergeant Bennett. And that would conclude the official recognitions, but with Mr. Chuck Williams, there is a pretty awesome daughter of an employee with us today, so I want to say thank you to her.
Item 4.3, public recognitions, and we'll start on the end. Mr. Jennings?
Yes, Mr. President. It's not a recognition. I just want to talk to the public, just for my conversation, about the incidents that we've been having in the city of Tupelo of the, I call them, and it goes out to the families that lost loved ones. And I'm pleading with the city of Tupelo, especially with the people that lost loved ones, and talking to our young men and women that we need to stop the incidents of killing and shooting and robbing and stealing. Let's stop. Let's just stop. And I thought about this. I'm working on a plan that I'll be getting with the mayor later on about and involving the whole city about. We need to come together as a community. We have a great city, and I want to see this city prosper for all. And I'm asking the one that's out there doing evil things to stop and think about what you're doing to tear up this city. That's my statement.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Ms. Davis?
I have two things that I want to say. I'd like to thank everyone who supported me and being able to serve on the council again. I love the city very much, and thank you for allowing me to serve another four years. And last year around this time, my husband was very ill, wasn't here at the meeting, but I tried to be supportive of the city even during that time. And again, the time has arrived when he passed, and I'm asking for your prayers and support. I'd like to thank the city for supporting me and giving me strength this year, so thank you so much.
Travis? All right. Item 4.4, the mayor's report.
Thank you, President Bryan. I've got several items, and I'll try to, for Councilman Whittington, try to go through as quick as possible. Do have a few announcements. First, would like to echo the statements that Councilman Jennings made and certainly offer thoughts and prayers to Councilwoman Nettie Davis. She certainly lost a great partner in Coach Davis, and we're thinking about you and praying for you. A few announcements. Did want to mention that Family Night for the Junior Tupelo Police Academy is Thursday, June 22 at 5:30 PM at the Law Enforcement Training Center at 1 Finney Lane over in East Tupelo. The aquatic, excuse me, the C.C. Augustus Pool will be taking part in the world's largest swimming lesson. It's set for Thursday, June 22 from 10 to 11 a.m. This is part of a worldwide event. More than 20 countries on five continents are participating over a 24-hour period to build awareness about the importance of teaching children to swim. And just want to take this opportunity also to brag on our Park and Recreation Department, Tupelo Aquatic Center, the Little Ripples Program that we have, the other programs that we have that we teach. And I know Councilman Beard could probably say it better than me, but part of our All America City platform was about teaching every child in the city to swim, and that's something that we're very proud of. One of the other platforms, so to speak, for the All America City 2015 submission was our Police Athletic League. The first annual Tupelo Police Athletic League banquet is set for 7:00 PM Thursday, June 22 at the Tupelo Country Club. We'll have former Ole Miss basketball coach Rod Barnes as the guest speaker, and of course, Sergeant Russell and Officer Smith will be there as well. The Bells and Whistles Vintage Technology Exhibit at the Orndone City Museum opens Saturday, May 27 and continues through the month of June. Just want to invite the public to that. The COP program or COP program at the Tupelo Police Department, our Community Oriented Policing Program at the Tupelo Police Department is sponsoring a reading program, Fun Day, Cops and Kids, from 9:00 PM, starting at 9:00 a.m. in the morning on Saturday, July 15, and then they'll have a basketball program beginning at noon. The, what I wanted to conclude the report with this night, kind of echoes again what Councilwoman Davis was saying, want to congratulate each and every one of our council members for even, we, between the seven council members and myself, we kind of had every possible election experience you can have, from unopposed to, you know, highly contested and everything in between. But want to congratulate all seven members of the council for being reelected. This is the first time that anyone in recent memory can remember a time when all seven, or, you know, I know there was nine at one time, but all members of the Tupelo City Council and the mayor were reelected at the same time. And then you have each of the city's department heads coming back as well, of course, subject to confirmation by the council. And I think that speaks volumes of the hard work and dedication of this city council. Our city, over the past four years, has seen our fair share of challenges and don't have to repeat them, but we've also seen record-breaking success, levels of economic growth and success that have never happened before in the city. And, you know, housing growth, commercial construction growth, the other successes that we've had, being named the Mississippi Overall City of the Year, the All America Award, and the different things. So that's something that as a council, administration, and a city that we can be very proud of, and I just want to congratulate each of our council members and let you know how much I look forward to working with each and every one of you over this next term that begins July 1, and hopefully, hopefully, we can avoid our share of the challenges and just continue the successes. The swearing-in ceremony of the city council and the mayor is set for June 29, which is Thursday, at 4:00 PM in the theater at the Elvis Presley Birthplace. Reception will follow there at the, in the reception hall there of the birthplace. The pictures and each of the council members should have received an email with the schedule, but the pictures, the official council mayor picture and the other individual pictures and everything will happen before that, so make sure, check your email for that. But with that, that would conclude my report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Item five, public agenda. Item 5.1, public hearings. Item 5.1A, May 1, 2017, Planning Committee Recommendation of Rezoning. We have anybody here to talk about the rezoning on the Planning Committee? All right. Item 5.1B, May 1, 2017, Planning Committee Recommendation of Text Amendments. Anybody here to talk about that? Okay. Item 5.1C, lot mowing of properties. Anybody here to talk about lot mowing of properties? Okay. Seeing, seeing none, we'll close the public, item 5.2, citizens' hearings, which we have done, we'll close the public agenda and open the regular meeting. Item six, action agenda. Item 6.1, review, adopt, reject the Planning Committee Recommendation to amend Sixth Section of the Development Code. This item was tabled on June 6, 2017.
Make a motion to take it off the table.
I got a, I got a motion by Markel Whittington, who was the second, and a second by Mike Bryan to take it off the table. All in favor? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to?
Make a motion, we adopt the recommendation.
Second.
I got a motion by Markel Whittington and Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. Any discussion? All in favor? Recommendations are adopted. Item 6.2, review approved rezoning of 1.2 acres on Northeastern.
Make a motion, we accept the rezoning of 1.2 acres on Northeastern Boulevard.
Got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Willie Jennings. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 6.3, review and approve resolution granting a 2015 nine-year requested add tax, add valorm tax exemption to PhoneCraft Incorporated. This was moved up on June 6, 2017.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
I got a motion from Markel Whittington and a second by Buddy Palmer. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 6.4, review and approve resolution granting a 2016 10-year requested add valorm tax exemption to PhoneCraft Incorporated, and this item was moved up on June 6, 2017.
I move we approve this resolution.
Second.
I got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Travis Beard. All in favor? Motion carries. Item seven, routine agenda. Item 7.1, review and approve the minutes of the May 16, 2017, regular city council meeting.
I move that we would approve the minutes of May 16, 2017.
Second.
I got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard. All in favor? The minutes are approved. Item 7.2, review and approve, reject advertising and promotional expenses.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Willie Jennings, and our, somewhere in here, we had several items to the North Mississippi Daily Journal and then a advertising agreement with one of the Booster Clubs. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.3, review and pay the bills.
I make a motion that we pay bills.
Second.
I got a motion by Willie Jennings and a second by Buddy Palmer, and the bills tonight were paid by Willie Jennings, Travis Beard, Buddy Palmer, Markel Whittington, and Nettie Davis. All in favor? The bill is paid. Item 7.4, review and accept the following appointments to the Police Advisory Board.
I move we accept the, oh, are you going to have to name the?
I'm going to name them all off.
Okay, I'm sorry.
For Ward 1, John Hines. Ward 2, Terry Goen. Ward 3, Robert Baum. Ward 4, Erin Washington. Ward 5, Larry Presley, who will be the committee vice chairman. Ward 6, Tom Hewitt. Ward 7, Ron Richardson. The mayor's appointment, Bill Allen, the committee chair, and also a mayor's appointment, Gabriella Ungo.
Mr. President, I move we accept those appointments to the Police Advisory Board.
Second, my motion.
I got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Nettie Davis. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
If we could have everybody stand up. John Hines, Terry Goen, Robert Baum.
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 He doesn't like Robert.
I don't like Robert.
Oh, Bob Baum, okay. Erin Washington, Larry Presley, Tom Hewitt, didn't see Tom with us tonight, Ron Richardson, Bill Allen, and Gabriella Ungo.
If possible, they could come and make a picture together.
Mayor, was there, was there, everybody notified that they was going to be on?
Everyone was notified, but Colonel Allen and Gabriella Ungo both sent emails that they had conflicts tonight, but they wouldn't be at the first advisory board meeting. I don't believe that I got an email from Ron, but I'm sure he had a conflict or he's been appointed before and may have.
Y'all can sit down now. Thank you. All in favor?
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did not support this creation of this advisory board, and my position hasn't changed. I am not voting no on any individual on this committee. I am voting no because I do not think that we need to have this advisory board. So, it's not anything personal with any committee member.
Any other discussion?
I would like to say that I'm very proud that we've established this board. I served on a committee, and I thought that the people who served on the committee really offered some very good information and concern about the city of Tupelo. I'm happy that we are getting this board, and I'm very proud of every appointee that has been presented tonight.
Travis? Anybody else?
Well, yeah, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate the willingness of the committee members to serve on this board, so I do appreciate that.
I, I, go ahead.
No, I'd just like to echo Councilman Palmer. Thank you for serving and giving your time. I think this is going to be a worthwhile committee, and I think that your input is going to be invaluable to the police department.
I'd just like to say that I'm proud that we going to have. I think we got a good selection. And I would just like to ask a question, and I ain't trying to put nobody on the spot. I support this, but if I wasn't support this, I wouldn't pick anybody, because that put that person in a dilemma. So I just want to make that go on the record. I don't think we should vote on it. A person should vote on it if they not supporting it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Appointments are confirmed. Item 7.5, review and? One of those. Okay, we got six, four, and one against. Item 7.5, review and accept the following individuals to be either appointed or reappointed to the boards mentioned. Hold on a second. Let me, let me, let me see how this thing's going. I'm going to read all this stuff, and then we'll, and then we'll get the, the motion and the second. For the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, a reappointment of Stephanie Browning, and she represents the Hotel Association, and a reappointment for Chauncey Godwin, who represents the Restaurant Association. For the Historical Preservation Society, a reappointment of Mary Victoria, and a reappointment of Bill Smith. To the Planning Committee, a reappointment to Margaret Kennedy, a reappointment of Scott Davis, and a reappointment of Patty Thompson. Tupelo Housing Authority, the appointment of Wesley Wells, and his biography's attached. And to the Tupelo Redevelopment Agency, a reappointment of Shane Holman and a reappointment of Cheryl Rainey. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I move that we would approve these appointees for, for the various?
I have a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Markel Whittington. All in favor?
I'm sorry, I'm, I know I'm out of order. I didn't mean to interrupt the vote. I just wanted to mention that MacArthur Turner was, there was a little bit of confusion that was my, my error on that. A new appointment for the Planning Committee will be submitted for the next meeting, and that's why it shows up on some documentation and is omitted from other. That was my error. Sorry to interrupt, but I didn't mean to do that.
All right. Item 7.6, review and accept the minutes of the June 5, 2017 Planning Committee Meeting Minutes.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Second.
I got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Buddy Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.7, review and approve a proclamation declaring additional holiday for city employees.
So move.
Second.
I got a motion by Willie Jennings and a second, Buddy Palmer, and a second by Markel Whittington. We, we made a proclamation at the last meeting, but to make sure we're doing this all statute and all that, I think we were supposed to do it differently than we did it. But anyway, the governor has made a proclamation allowing the state employees, July 3 off since the fourth falls on a Tuesday, I believe. So, all in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.8, review and accept minutes of the May 11, 2017 Historic Preservation Commission meeting.
I move that we'd accept the minutes of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
I got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.9, review and accept minutes of the May 8, 2017 Major Thoroughfare Committee meeting.
So move.
Second. I got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Buddy Palmer. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.10, review and approve Change Order Number One, the Wayfinding and Signing Improvements Project for the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I move that we would approve the change order.
Second.
I got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Mike Bryan. Mayor?
Thank you, President Bryan. This is, was the subject of a recent budget amendment. The budget amendment was already approved to allow the CBB to, to make these changes. This is essentially for better polls. Some of the original polls that were installed didn't work out like we want them to do, so it's for sturdier and more aesthetically pleasing signage as part of this wayfinding project.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.11, review and approve a contract between Rutledge Contracting and the city of Tupelo, Thomas Street Highway 6 Interchange Project. This bid was awarded on June 6, 2017. I got a motion by Willie Jennings.
Second.
Got a second by Travis Beard. All in favor? Motion, any opposed? I've got six, four, one against. Item 7.12, review and approve Change Order Number One, the final, for the Safe Routes to School Projects on Thomas Street at, at Thomas Street Elementary and Hancock Park to Ida Street.
I move that we would approve the change order number one.
Second.
Got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I would just like to say that since the sidewalks been installed in this last phase, it's really been a safety, I ask, a lot of people are using the sidewalks, so I was glad we were able to do that. I wish we would be able to do more in the future.
Good.
I also am happy that we, we, it was just, just a change order, but that we have sidewalks so that the students can go safely to the various schools in that area. So, this is really a great problem.
Good. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.13, review and approve request for donation leave on the fire department.
I move we approve the request for donation leave for the fire department.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Travis Beard. Evidently, we had a fireman while off duty injured himself, and he is not going to be, go back to work as it is, and so some fellow firemen are going to donate vacation days so he can continue to get paid while he heals. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.14, review and accept a $2,500 donation from Walmart for the Tupelo Fire Department.
Make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
Got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Travis Beard. Mayor?
This is a donation from Walmart for $2,500 that would be for the, some of the overtime expenditures for the fire department, subject to the council approving the acceptance of the donation. It'll be included in the next budget amendment by Ms. Hannah for this fiscal year.
Very, very good. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.15, review and approve request to surplus officer's duty weapon Glock Model 19, 9-millimeter. Item 7.15, Review and Approve Request a Surplus Officer's Duty Weapon Glock Model 19, 9mm, serial number TCL 297 for $1, which will be turned over to him for his retirement from the City of Tupelo. There's a state statute that allows a retired police officer is able to purchase his duty weapon from the city for $1, and so it's been custom in the past that Tupelo allows our officers to do that. Do I have a motion?
I move that.
Nettie Davis makes a motion, and Mike Bryan seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.16, Review and Approve Proposed Budget Calendar for Fiscal Year 2018.
I move to approve this proposed budget calendar.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Buddy Palmer.
Yeah.
All right, any, any discussion on the budget calendar? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.17, Review and Approve List of Lot Mowing of Properties.
I move that we would approve the list of lot mowing properties.
Second.
Got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 8, the Study Agenda. Being on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of these are ad-valorem tax exemptions, are these ready to be moved up and voted on yet?
They are ready for our part, but if the council desires to go ahead and suspend the rules.
So, because everything that's on the study agenda can have the rules suspended and be voted on?
Including the police advisory board, unless the council wants to discuss that.
What I would like to do is, since all this is ready, then we'll go through each item. I'll ask for a motion to suspend the rules, and I'll do one motion to suspend the rules on items 1, 8.1 through 8.6, and move it to the action agenda, and then we'll go through them from top to bottom.
I move that we would suspend the rule from 8.1 all the way to 8.6.
Second.
I got a motion by Nettie Davis and a second, Mike Bryan, to suspend the rules and move items 8.1 through 8.6 to the action agenda, I mean, to the routine agenda. All in favor? The motion carries. Item 8.1, Review and Discuss Resolution Granting 2017 Ad-Valorem Tax Exemption to In-A-Car Foam Technologies.
Make a motion that we approve?
Second.
I got a motion by Marco Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 8.2, Review and Discuss Police Advisory Board Coordinates Revision.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Got a motion by Marco Whittington and a second by Buddy Palmer. All in favor? Motion carries.
No, no, no.
No. All right, now I've got 6, 4, 1 against. Item 8.3, Review and Approve Resolution Granting 2017 Ad-Valorem Tax Exemption to Leggett and Platt Incorporated, number 0341.
So move. Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beard, and who was my second? Mike Bryan. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 8.4, Review and Approve Resolution Granting 2017 Ad-Valorem Tax Exemption to Leggett and Platt Incorporated, number 0908.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Buddy Palmer. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 8.5, Review and Approve Resolution Granting 2017 Ad-Valorem Tax Exemption to Leggett and Platt Incorporated, number 4201.
So move.
Willie Jennings made the motion, and Nettie Davis is the second. All in favor? Motion carries. And item 8.6, Review and Approve Resolution Granting 2017 Ad-Valorem Tax Exemption to Cooper Tire Company.
So move. Second.
Got a motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Marco Whittington. All in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Logan, do you see a need for executive session tonight?
I do not.
Since there being no need for executive session, do I have a motion that we adjourn?
I have a motion adjourned.
All right, I heard a bunch of mumbling, so Mr. Beard made a motion, and Mr. Palmer made a second. All in favor? The city council's adjourned.